I will call to order this meeting of the Clackamas County Commission and ask for the roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Damon.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Leininger.
Here.
Chair Leehan.
Here. And I'll note for the record that Commissioner Bernard is attending a meeting in Salem and will not be here today. With that, I would ask you to rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would entertain a motion to approve the order of agenda.
Chair Leehan, I move we approve the order of the September 20th.
Oh, sorry, September 27th.
Thank you, September 27th, 2012 business meeting agenda.
I will second that.
It's not going back in time. It's been moved by Commissioner Damon and seconded by Commissioner Leininger that we approve the order of agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye passes four zero and is unanimous. Today, we have a couple of presentations that we always look forward to after the fair season ends. Our first presentation, we will call up Lori Bothwell with Clackamas County Fair and we'll hear the 2012 fair recap and then a 4H presentation. And I don't, do you want Jan Williams to join you up here now or?
It's up to you.
If you'd like to come up, Jan, you could be there with.
Good morning.
Just introduce yourself to the crowd.
I'm Lori Bothwell and I'm the Fair Manager.
My name is Jan Williams. I'm the 4H Youth Faculty Oregon State University Extension.
Maybe you need to pull that mic closer.
The Fair Board and Staff's dedication and purpose is to provide a showplace for educational activities, helpful competition, and recognition of our county youth, agriculture, business, commerce, history, and tourism. The County Fair represents the results of our citizens' labor. It brings together our youth, our seniors, our neighbors, and our friends. Weather dictates everything in the fair industry, and this year it was a hot one. Temperatures were in the high 90s for most of the week. We still had 125,000 people pass through our gates and attend the fair. It is down about 6.6 percent from last year. It did cool off on Saturday and Sunday, which brought an increase of attendance of 8 percent compared to last year. Forty-one nonprofit groups participated in the fair. Of these, 11 were food booths that generated an estimated 113,000 in gross revenue. The Clackamas County Junior Livestock Auction generated 257,000 for 4H and FFA youth, and that's up about 2 percent from last year. The FFA students had 548 entries in the open class division, which is division for people who are not in 4H or FFA. There were 2,191 livestock entries and 3,875 static entries, which means sewing, cooking, textiles. Overall, exhibits were up 7 percent. That's exciting in our fair industry because most of fairs, it's going downward. And we'll have a presentation from Jan in just a minute. The Clackamas County Fair would not be successful without the many organizations and volunteers that contribute each year. For example, on the Saturday before fair, we have about 200 volunteers on the grounds, painting, putting up pins, setting up the rodeo arena, and taking in entries. The Canby Rodeo is one of our main attractions during the fair. I call it our number-one attraction. This group of dedicated men and women consists of 20 directors, 26 associates, and numerous volunteers that I can only begin, can't even count. We produce one of the top PRCA rodeos in the United States. They were recognized in 2010 for Best Rodeo in the Columbia River Circuit, which is the circuit that we belong to in the Northwest. And last year, we received the award for the best footing from the Women's Pro Rodeo Association, which of course is the best dirt, gives them good speed, fast speed, and I wanted to share that again. The rodeo committee raised over $104,000 in sponsorship dollars that help offset the cost of the rodeo. Our Safety Street Program organized by Clackamas County Safe Communities gives children and adults the chance to speak with safety professionals, had nearly 200 volunteers this year at the fair. Changes for this year's fair included the relocation of the Beer Garden, more entertainers performing during the fair, the new main lawn restrooms, and of course, the improvements to Third and Fourth Streets, which consisted of the new roads, sidewalks, bike lanes, pedestrian crossings, and a paved handicap parking area. In the past, the number-one concern that I would hear would be about our handicap parking and our access. This year, I did not receive one concern. Can't believe that, not one. So I want to thank Clackamas County and the city of Canby for giving us a wonderful gift of a new road and parking spaces. I know we had a great fair despite the heat. As I walked through the grounds in that 98-degree weather, so many people stopped me to tell me why they liked the fair. They liked it because they ran into friends they hadn't seen in years, the trees, the grass, the livestock barns being full, some even being overcrowded, and of course, the rodeo. It's so great to see that our community loves our fair. We will continue to strive to produce a county fair that exceeds all fairs while remembering our traditions, our agriculture, education, and our family values. Thank you. And I'll have Jan Williams from OSU Extension speak.
Good morning. We had a very exceptional fair. Our numbers were up quite a bit, as she alluded to. The numbers for our livestock were up quite a lot this year. We were almost overcrowded, especially in our small animals. Our numbers were up over 18 percent in terms of our youth participation and things like that. And in that vein, I'd like to introduce a couple of our youth that did want to come and talk to you about their 4H experience, especially at fair. So if I may have Kelsey and Daniel Leinbach come on up and Jacob Johnson.
We can pull a couple of chairs up.
I'm going to step aside so they have an opportunity.
Hi, my name is Jacob L. Johnson. I'm 16. I'm a homeschool student from Sandy, Oregon, and this was my seventh year exhibiting at the county fair. I'm also a Clackamas County representative on the 4H State Ambassador Team. This year at the county fair, I entered two livestock projects of sheep and goats. I also took small animals, rabbits, and cavey, and exhibited a clothing exhibit, which I have here with me today, a little shirt with slacks. I really appreciate the county fair that it's sort of, after all the work we put in with our different projects, whether it be the livestock, the small animals, or where we enter in the static exhibits, it's sort of finally where we get to exhibit them and show how much work we put into them and how much it means to us. It is definitely the highlight of my year.
Jacob, can you show them what your achievements were for your livestock exhibit too?
Well, actually, what I have with me is, this is a belt buckle from Rabbit Showmanship and the Small Animals, as well as the ribbon that goes along with it. There's ribbons similar to this for the clothing exhibit. And also, I have with me, well, it's actually wearing it, one from Small Animals in general.
Great.
Kelsey Leinbach and Daniel Leinbach, would you like to tell us about your experiences?
I think, can you hear this?
You can pull that, too, you.
Oh, that's, okay. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. So this year for 4H was my first year in presenting at fair, at county fair. I've done other 4H projects. I'm 17 and I'm a senior this year, so last year I was registered as an 11th grader. And I was really nervous about starting with fair. I'd gone to the county fair, you know, in past years, and I was like, okay, this year I'm really going to just go and I'm going to accomplish something. And so I worked on my projects all year. I'm in Hearth Projects, which is home economics, art, and home environment and other projects like that, so all the static exhibits. And we present in the club, the 4H Hall. And I work with food preservation, sewing, and other, like I said, other static exhibits. So this year, I went and I did spaghetti sauce, tomato sauce, and I received champion in that with 4H. And then because of the fair, the Clackamas County Fair, I was able to go to state fair and I got state champion. And I was really excited about that because, like I said, it was my first year presenting. And I had done sewing projects and I got champion on that. And I had done a couple others and I had gotten the green champion at county fair. And I was really excited and it just made me feel really good to see the work that I had put in and have the recognition that I was not expecting. And because of the county fair, I was able to invite other friends to come and they're now excited about our 4H program and are looking to join a club.
And what school are you from?
I go to Oregon Connections Academy. It's an online charter school.
And were all those ribbons for your spaghetti sauce?
No.
I was going to say, Newman's Own has a run for its money.
I got a champion ribbon for the sauce at county fair. This one was for state fair. I had done a food preservation gift basket and I got grand champion on that. And then I got reserve grand champion on my tuna that I canned. And then I went on to get champion in the sauce at state and then reserve champion with the tuna again, and then reserve champion with the basket, so.
A lot of entries.
I'm Daniel Leinbach and I also go to Oregon Connections Academy, which is an online charter school. And I'm from Lake Oswego. And this year was my first year presenting food preservation and leatherwork at county fair. And that was a very good experience for me and it was definitely the highlight of my summer. And here, I brought with me beans that I canned earlier in the year. And I got champion at county fair for them. And later on, after county fair, I earned champion at state fair, which was a lot of fun. And I also presented pickles that I canned and an apple pie filling that I canned and a leather belt that I am wearing right now. And I had a very good experience at the county fair. And I told some of my friends that I was entering projects for 4H and that got them interested, so they went to the 4H Hall and checked out all the exhibits and they saw how cool it was and that 4H isn't all about animals. And now, most of them are looking into 4H and wanting to join a few clubs or just somehow get involved. And it's just been a very good experience and I've learned a lot about myself and about other, and I've been able to meet other people. And it's just been a good experience.
So let me ask any of the three of you, so is public speaking part of what you learn in 4H as well, because all three of you seem to do very well?
I personally do do both the presentations and the impromptu speaking at county fair, which through the presentations, I was able to also go to state fair.
Well, it shows.
Yeah. Excellent job. Well, I'll just make a couple of comments. I think that the 4H program in Clackamas County especially is just outstanding. I'm always impressed at our fair and at state fair. How many Clackamas County exhibits are, end up at the state fair? So do we track how we do as a county at state fair?
Oh, yes. We actually do very, very well. Part of our success is that we do have fairly high standards and we do offer opportunities throughout the year at the, because we are graciously allowed the opportunity to use the fair facilities during the year to do educational programming. And so we do have the opportunity to achieve higher quality products because the youth have the chance to come and participate. I believe Kelsey said this year for the first year, she wanted to try a new project and she attended one of our events and she did actually try something new because she was able to have that educational experience that we were able to provide at the county fairgrounds. So, yeah, we do very, very well, actually. In terms of numbers, that's, it's still preliminary right now because we just wrapped it up, so I'm not quite at the end of the numbers on that.
Yeah. No, I always encourage people to go, of course, to go to the Clackamas County Fair, but also to go to the state fair so that they can see how well-represented Clackamas County is at the state fair because we have such a high participation rate in our 4H programs countywide. And a lot, so a lot of credit to you and the Extension Service for making 4H what it is. But anybody else want to make any comments and then we'll go down and?
I just want to just acknowledge your good work and your efforts and, you know, the fortitude it takes to come forth and present yourselves today. And I just want to say I'm honored that you folks have represented Clackamas County so well and thank you for your leadership. Got to be proud.
So should we walk down and do our photo?
Sure.
We'll come down and take a picture because we would like to have a picture with the famous people.
Lori, you want Lori and Jan in the picture also? Lori and Jan also? Yep. Just scooch in a little bit. There we go. So we'll take a couple. Keep looking at her. Look straight. And just one more. Perfect.
And I will remind the 4Hers that if they would like to see this, it's rebroadcast on Channel 30.
Yep, Channel 30.
On my TV, it's 40, but whatever, it's rebroadcast.
And it's on our webpage, too.
And on our webpage. So you can see it and take a clip if you want of that. And then, the next thing is, I would like to invite Mayor Carson from Canby up and so that he can tell us a little bit about what they did in what the city of Canby, you could go ahead and come up, Randy. And, yes.
And we also have City Administrator Greg Ellis with Randy.
Yes, Greg Ellis, the city manager. Because as Lori noted, you couldn't go to the fair this year if you'd been before and not noticed the tremendous improvements on Fourth Street and that have been made and what a difference that makes to the entry of the fair and the fair experience. And so maybe you could tell us a little bit about what went into those improvements and how that has worked.
Thanks for inviting us today, Chair President Lee and Commissioners, thank you. Basically, we all want to thank for the acknowledgement of the cooperation that we worked together between Clackamas County, the fair with Lori Bothwell, and our staff to make sure that Canby is ready for the fair. It's actually a year-round project, you know, there's always something going on at the fair. It seems like Lori is always saying, hey, what are you going to do this next weekend? Come on down and see what's going on with the dog show or, you know, car show or whatever. So it's actually a big part of our community that we want to make sure that people are aware that, how much we work together. The downtown businesses really appreciate people coming into town and if they're not at the fair, they can be downtown, maybe having a bite to eat or checking out what we do there also. But the big thing that happened in the last two years is that we did the, we call it the triangle area, which was on the west side of the fairgrounds area. We made some one-way streets there to facilitate traffic flow. And then this year, before the fair, we made sure it was done before the fair started, is that we did the area in between, right in front of the fairgrounds down toward the Depot Museum with the help of everybody in the fairgrounds area to make sure that we could get the right-of-way and then get it done in a timely manner. So appreciate everything and Greg's got maybe a couple more comments to go.
Yeah. Thank you for having us. Just the breakdown, there was actually two projects and combined, it was about a million dollars. And the one, the first one was done last year, ended in October, and then we started the one to make sure, I think in June, so that we could make sure we got it done before the fair started. And I know Lori wasn't stressed at all about that. We're in Rotary together and she was a finer one day during the construction. And a little story on Lori here. And she says, anybody who's complained about a road project, put in a dollar. So I threw in five bucks because I did a lot of complaining. But I think the outcome is obvious that it's a beautiful project now and we really appreciate the collaboration more than the cooperation, but we had both because the county put in that, a lot of right-of-way, didn't have any money come out of your general fund or any of your street funds, but we couldn't have done without that right-of-way, obviously. And there were several county representatives and employees at the meetings we had, making sure this thing works. So we really appreciate the collaboration. I think it's, the results speak for themselves. So thank you very much.
Well, and I know it was a challenging environment to work in because we have some really large trees near the, near where the road widening was happening and a building that's very close to the edge as well. So we didn't have a lot of space to work with to get the improvements in there. But it came out to be fabulous in the end. And I know from my experience walking down Fourth Street in the past when it was two-way and you had a lot of people, pedestrians at fairtime, walking along that road, it really was less than pleasant and bordering on not safe. And now, it feels entirely comfortable to walk down Fourth.
Actually, every year, I talked to one of our lieutenants and he said, every year, there is a pedestrian car interaction. And usually, it's like a mirror hitting somebody because there's no place to walk on that one side, the north side. And so now, we have the sidewalk much safer, much safer.
Excellent, excellent work and we really appreciate it. We appreciate it and appreciate the partnership.
Thank you.
And I think working together with you guys and I really appreciate the 4H kids and FFA people and all the visitors that came this year, too. Like, it does really make Canby a spot on the map, a garden spot for people to come and visit Canby. So we appreciate everything that everybody does. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, I think it's important to note while the fair looks beautiful and with the new bathrooms, you know, that we didn't mention that today, and all the improvements that have been made, there's still work to do out at the fair, the horse barn. There's a number of structures that need some work. I know the fair is going to be working on a, they're working on a master plan to try to target and prioritize what improvements are needed. So we have a long ways to go and continued partnership with the city of Canby to make those kinds of improvements and help make the fair the economic engine that, you know, that has been really serving your community. So I just want to make sure to put that out there that there's still some, still some things to work on out at the fair.
And the intersection there at Pine and 99, too, if we need to do some restructuring there in the future, too. So that's on our drawing boards, too. Look at that on our TSP. So maybe you can get some help from the county on that at some point.
I just want to just compliment the city of Canby for how much progress you guys have made and the leadership it's taken, it's appreciated, you know. Guys, just seeing year after year, just more and more progress in the city of Canby and, you know, it's just great that, you know, great job hosting, you know, in essence, the fair as a city. And I'm just really impressed and it's a pleasure always to go to Canby, you know, see something new all the time.
Come on out more often.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask one other question of Lori. One of the things that you, that came before us, before the fair, was the change on the beer walk-around and we were doing that as a trial to see how that worked out. I'm not describing it very well, but I wanted to follow up and see because some people were concerned that it would be a problem and.
Well, what we did is we did walk-around beer from like 11 to about 6:00 and then we shut it down from walk-around beer to, people had to stay inside the designated beer area, which was a smaller. We had no incidences during the day of anyone walking past the limited area that they could go to with their beer and it seemed to be very successful. We had no criminal incidents or anything, so it worked out really well.
Okay. Just wanted to follow up on that.
It worked.
Thank you.
I did notice the same thing is that they had the staff on duty there, made sure that people were staying within the area. I was in and out several different days and they were very diligent to make sure that people were obeying the rules on that.
Yeah. Okay.
Thanks for asking.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a second presentation today that is proclaiming October 2012 as Clackamas County Arts and Humanities Month and also October 1st through the 8th as Days of Culture in Clackamas County. I think we have culture every day, but, well, especially those days apparently. And we have Daniel Cowan here from Tourism and Cultural Affairs and Cheryl Snow with the Arts Alliance. I don't know if you want to come up here or come up there. And turn it over to Daniel.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. It's, I'm Danielle Cowan, Executive Director for Clackamas County Tourism and Cultural Affairs. And with me is Cheryl, and I'll go to Cheryl in a few moments, but I just wanted to touch on, that's a hard act to follow. The 4H kids are great. I was a 4H'er myself. I was a 4-Her myself, sheep in sewing, so I appreciate that. It's interesting, too, the connection that we have with the fair. Clackamas County Tourism Funding, transient room tax go to support the fair, as well as the partnership that Commissioner Damon was just talking about as far as the master planning and prioritizing. That's a very large project that is housed in tourism that we're working in partnership with the fairgrounds and the fair board on. So we're excited about that, and we have been moving right along, except for the fair came in the way of it, so we kind of delayed for a little bit, but we're going to get back to it. This month, of course, is October coming up, and October 12th is the National Arts and Humanities Month. And as part of that celebration, Governor Kitzhopper has declared October 1st through the 8th, 2012, as Oregon Days of Culture. And he's doing that in recognition of the state's Innovative Cultural Trust, which is now celebrating its 10th anniversary, which is pretty spectacular. And as you may be aware, well, sorry, you may be aware that it's driven by gifts from individuals and businesses, and that the trust invests in the cultural life of every Oregon community. So it draws us together in common purpose and understanding the arts, heritage, and humanities, and ritualize of all of us in the county on a daily basis. And it really is the basis for creative industries, including our cultural tourism functions, and significantly contributes to Clackamas County's sustainable economic vitality. And just so you know, the Oregon Cultural Trust and the Clackamas County Cultural Coalition together have invested over $400,000 in the county to support arts and culture. So that's a pretty significant number. And so I also wanted to bring up, if I might, for a moment, as another partnership, before I introduce Cheryl, to kind of talk about some more specifics. We have the Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition that we've been working in partnership, both at the county level and at the tourism level, with a number of partners. And you might be aware that in October, October 12th through the 14th, we're celebrating the Willamette Falls Festival. It's a new, huge sort of undertaking by the county and our partners, and that's coming up. And I just wanted to let folks know that it really is the combination of arts and culture together. We're trying to get the Willamette Falls Heritage Area designated as a national heritage area and also as a state heritage area, which with that comes cultural and economic opportunity and hopefully redevelopment and preserving of very precious structures and historical parts of our county, particularly in the Oregon City-Westland area. And so I just brought with me a poster, and you can go on for more information to the website at willamettefalsfestival.com. And just so you know, there are things which Cheryl may be talking about, which are how some of this arts and culture come together. We'll be having an evening on Friday, the 12th, where it's going to start off with the Oregon City and Westland High School bands marching over, playing their fight songs over the arch bridge, which will be reopened on the 15th, and this is in celebration of that, so that's the kickoff. We'll be having a ripple artifact art walk, which is a river cleanup that has been developed into art projects that will be sold and displayed in downtown Oregon City. Cheryl probably has some more information on that. We'll be having the next day an artisan farmer's market where we're actually bringing our local farmers in who don't normally do farmer's markets or anything, and they'll be demonstrating and sharing and selling their wares at an unusual farmer's market. And just a lot of different things, from art to fireworks to, we're having artistic performances with Lisa Mann, Ellen White, and the Deep Soul Review, Deep Blue Soul Review on Saturday afternoon. We're having Matt Love speaking on poetry and some other workshops. There's a Stern Wheeler Wine and Cheese event, and Stern Wheeler Rose, I should say. The Grand Ron Tribe is doing some cultural interpretations and encampment down at Clackamas Park. There's also on Sunday will be a 5K fun run and a bike run pedal triathlon, funnel-athlon. And then, for those of you who don't know, the bridge was opened in 1922 with a wedding. And we are doing a rededication ceremony with a couple of, one couple from Oregon City and one from Westland, and they'll be doing that to commemorate that activity that was done. And they're also taking it as a very serious opportunity to rededicate themselves, so that'll be a lot of fun. And then we're having a parade and opening ceremonies and a lot of other fun, so...
And do we know either of these couples?
We do know one. One is our own Sherri Anderson, and she is our county treasurer, and her husband...
County treasurer is going to be renewing her vows.
And both couples, this happens to be their actual anniversary weekend, so...
Oh, nice.
It was all kind of nice how that came together. So again, if you would like to register for any of these activities, some of them require registration, like the fun run and the, there's dinner and some other stuff, you can go online and do that as well. But Cheryl Snow has been a great partner throughout for many different projects and is our Executive Director for Arts and Culture for Clackamas County under Tourism. And you, and through some of your funding, helped support that. So I'll turn it over to Cheryl, and she can talk a little bit more about how, in other ways, arts and culture impact our economic and our cultural environments.
Well, I think I'll start by saying, it's clear that Danielle and I think that the Willamette Falls Festival is the intersection of arts, culture, heritage, and humanities in this month, so we are delighted that Governor Kitzhopper chose October to proclaim Arts and Humanities Month. I won't go into too much more detail, but what I would like to say is that the point that we try to make when we come to you each year to explain how arts, heritage, humanities, and the culture of our county, which includes our heritage and our history, all of these are the threads that bind us together as a community in every one of our cities and all of our rural areas. I love that we were preceded by the 4-H kids who explained, I think better than I can do or than Danielle can do, demonstrated how arts, culture, and heritage infuses our daily lives in everybody's family and everybody's community and in the larger county that we live in and work in together. So I think all I really want to add to that, you can go on our website and see all the many details of the events that we would like to share with you the weekend of October 12th through 14th. But what I'd really like to emphasize is that the purpose of the President of the United States and every governor of every state in proclaiming October as Arts, Heritage, and Humanities Month is to acknowledge that in the times that we live in where there is so much strife and incivility and lack of respect in public venues, it is our culture and our humanities and our heritage that binds us together and ties us together. So this is an opportunity for us and for you to acknowledge that publicly and to claim that where we see many differences among us, what is core and fundamental is what we share in common and what binds us together. So I'd like to conclude by saying that recognizing the value of heritage, humanities, and the arts to Clackamas County citizens throughout this county are encouraged to participate in cultural activities in their communities and to support the 60 cultural nonprofit organizations in Clackamas County and the many thousands of people in our county that dedicate at least a portion of their lives every day to what is fundamentally important to each of our lives. So with that, we've drafted a proclamation for you. Commissioner Leon, did you wish to read that, or would you like me to read that?
Yes, I would be pleased to read this proclamation. This is proclaiming October 2012 as Arts and Humanities Month and October 1st to the 8th, 2012, as Days of Culture in Clackamas County. And it reads, "Whereas the month of October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of arts and culture organizations, communities, and states across the country, as well as by the White House and Congress for more than two decades, and whereas the arts and humanities embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of human beings, and whereas culture draws us together in common purpose, understanding, and celebration, and whereas the arts, heritage, and humanities enhance and enrich the lives of all Clackamas County citizens on a daily basis, and whereas the Oregon Cultural Trust presents Oregon Days of Culture, October 1st to the 8th, during National Arts and Humanities Month to encourage Oregonians to celebrate, participate, and give to Oregon culture, and whereas October 8th, 2012, marks the 10th anniversary of Oregon's Innovative Cultural Tax Credit, encouraging new private and public investment in Oregon culture, and whereas supporting culture by giving to cultural nonprofits and to the Oregon Cultural Trust is vital to preserving the past, sustaining the present, and creating the future. Now, therefore, the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 2012 as Clackamas County Arts and Humanities Month, also declaring October 1st to the 8th, 2012, as Days of Culture, and call upon all the citizens of Clackamas County to participate in county and statewide culture to celebrate its vibrancy and depth and to give to the arts, heritage, and humanities to ensure their future vitality." Dated this 27th day of September, 2012, the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners. And with that, I would entertain a motion, perhaps, to proclaim, to approve this proclamation.
Chair Leon, I move we proclaim October 2012 as Clackamas County Arts and Humanities Month and October 1st through the 8th as Days of Culture in Clackamas County.
And I second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Leininger and seconded by Commissioner Damon that we proclaim October 2012 as Arts and Humanities Month. Are there, is there any discussion?
I just want to say that, you know, a lot of your presentation focused on the economic development aspects of art and culture and the value set embedded in that, and I just want to share that one of the things we've been doing in Clackamas County is really embedding our arts and culture programs with basic and essential services. And last week, I attended an event called Youth Theater for Change, which was a very innovative partnership between our Arts Alliance and our Juvenile Department. And it gives teens who have gotten into trouble for, you know, robbery or skipping school or fighting or selling drugs, one of them was in trouble for that this time, it gives them an opportunity to take responsibility, to give voice to their experience, to their families and to their friends in a theater production. It's very powerful. There was a lovely write-up in the Oregonian about it this week as a result of that workshop. This is the second year we've done it, and it's an amazing partnership, and it's just an example of how, you know, arts can be transformational and how art is essential in helping us to deliver some of our basic services. And so these youth are truly transformed by this experience. For them to stand up in front of their friends and family and take responsibility for their actions in the way that they did is, you know, it's heartening and it's pretty challenging to sit there and listen to their stories dry-eyed, I have to say. So I just want to put that out there, that there are a number of ways that we're partnering arts and essential services in Clackamas County. So it is, it's more than economic development. It's more than, you know, a nice thing and a beautiful thing and an enriching thing. It's a transformational act for at least this handful of youth, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Damon, for acknowledging that. Appreciate it.
Discussion? Then thank you very much. This is, we will, and I'm sure that all of us will, all of us up here will be at the bridge opening for some portion of it, because it'd be great. Did you want to say something?
There's a motion and a second.
Oh, there's a motion and a second, sorry.
So there's a vote.
Okay, then. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oh.
I was quiet with saying aye.
Seems to be in favor, 4-0, and is unanimous. We will then be Arts and Humanities Month, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Forgot to vote on it.
Okay.
Okay. And that brings us to citizen communication. This portion of citizen communication will proceed for about half an hour. If, I doubt we need to go beyond there. This is an opportunity to address the board on items that are not on the agenda or items that are on the agenda but not scheduled for public comment. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and when you come forward, give your name and at least the city or place where you live. And with that, I will call from the cards that I have here Glenn Corson and Mac Woods.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I'm Glenn Kirsten. I live in Millino, and I'm the Chair of the Area Agency on Aging for Clackamas County. And I want to thank all of you for all of the support you've given to seniors. As you probably know, the demographics show that the senior population is growing five times faster than the general population in Clackamas County. So the need is great, and it's going to only get greater. So we really appreciate all the help. For example, the small grant fund that you approved will really help some of these adult centers who have limited resources to provide meals and other services for seniors. So that's really, really appreciated. I also want to acknowledge Brenda Durbin and the effort that she and her staff have expended in putting together the Older American Act Four-Year Area Plan. Every four years, we have to put a plan together for how we're going to spend the Older American Act money. When I first joined the council several years ago, about four or five years ago, the staff came and had a plan and said, here, approve this. So we approved it. None of us really bought into it because we didn't participate, so it's out on the shelf. This time, Brenda and I agreed that the council was going to have an active role in developing that plan. We spent time looking at the needs of the citizens, the senior citizens, looking at some of their priorities, and the staff obviously wrote the plan, but we were involved at every step, reviewing drafts, saying, no, that's not quite what we meant and such. So you have on your consent calendar today, I believe, the approval of that four-year plan. So I really want to thank Brenda for the commitment to work with the council. I'm sure it would have been easier to sit back and write the plan, but she took the time and effort to listen to the council, so we appreciate that. We also, I just want to acknowledge, I appreciate Commissioner Damon coming to the meetings every month to listen to our concerns. I understand it's a two-and-a-half, three-hour meeting, but she always comes and listens to the heart of our concerns and I suspect brings them back to you. So again, I want to thank you for all of your support for the seniors. It's really critical. We're all getting there. Some of us faster than others, I suspect. At least, that's the way I feel. But anyway, thanks for your help.
Thanks, Glenn.
Thank you for coming.
Clackamas County Commissioners, I'm...
Hold on just one second.
Thank you.
Because she was going to ask a question.
I wanted to actually compliment you because in the four years that I've been a county commissioner, you have been a steadfast and positive champion of important issues, senior issues, and a whole range of issues, and your gracious, clear, thoughtful commentary on all the issues has made a lot of difference, including, I think, it helped make sure that senior, the grant, small grants program in support for senior services is a strong priority within that is continuing forward, and so thank you for your leadership.
Yeah, coming forward during, your testimony was especially important during the budget hearings. So thank you. Okay, go ahead.
I certainly concur with what this sharp, elderly, intelligent man is saying. We have a lot of seniors, a lot of them are in care facilities, and they all vote, and that's what I want to talk about, voter integrity. And that's what I want to talk about, voter integrity. That's what I think 99% of the people in Clackamas County care about. And I personally want to thank Sherri Hall, that Clackamas County has the cleanest, best record of most counties in the state. And voter integrity is such an important issue in the state. Everyone, every vote should count, and no other votes. Not dead people votes, not made-up people, not dogs, cats, and so forth. Part of the integrity of the vote is the law regarding the election office workers to destroy unused ballots at 8:00 p.m. on election night. This has not been happening by the direct mandate of Secretary of State Kate Brown. James Buekel will be arguing a case against Multnomah County for not destroying ballots at 8:00 p.m. on election night. This is James Buekel. I encourage Steve, a lot of attorneys, particularly state representatives, to attend this meeting, which is scheduled down at the courthouse. It's not only going to be applicable to Multnomah County, but all counties need, every voter counts. And for state representatives to go and see what's been going on that's in violation of the state law of Oregon, and that includes every county, every voter in the state and the county. A gentleman by the name of John Payne, who is a computer expert, teaches at PSU, discovered what you can do in less than one minute with one of these little keys that you plug into a computer. A few minutes after the voting is ended, they want to get it out to the news, so someone will walk up, pull this out of the computer, take it to another computer to get it on the news. Who knows what's already on it? And there comes about, in less than one minute, a way to change the voter outcome for that whole county. And then, they can take and bring it back, plug it back in, after they've added information to it. There was one county that had more votes than they had registered voters. Now, how can that be? So I encourage you to come down, state representatives, particularly our county, thank goodness, Kate Brown will probably likely to be there, and our Sherri Hall representative here, which is good. I thank Sherri Hall for her integrity in all of the county. Thank you. I'd like to say more, but I can't cover everything I know in less than three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
She's asking about the date again.
Yeah, oh, the date is October 8th. That's just over a week from now. And I had told Steve I wasn't going to be here. I was under the knife, less than 24 hours ago, right here at Willamette Falls. But this is so important, I thought it's necessary to get it out to the public. And that's why I went ahead and come, Steve. I'm sorry, I had not planned to come after surgery. I got a stomach full of stitches. That's why I'm walking slow. Normally, if I was any better, I'd be twins, kind of a thing, you know? Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Take care of yourself, Mac.
The next two cards I have are Mariana Moore and Lanell Vandermolen.
Mariana Moore, currently Gladstone, but I grew up in Milwaukee. So all of these things that are going on with the light rail, I've never been more than four miles away from it, anyway. We've been down there trying to save the trolley trail and the trees. And we got some publicity from Channel 6 and Channel 8 on Sunday and Monday. It happened on Sunday, I was going to class reunion for the class of 1952 and 53, which is my class. So there's a long history here. The Milwaukee Expressway took out the house I grew up in from 1939 until I got married. And so, it's gone, and I'm looking at what they're going to do. They're going to actually destroy the town. I have some of these that you could give to the people. But first, I want to talk about the trees. Because we've been down there, this is a trolley trail. It used to be the trolley that we rode. It was wonderful. It would come through Milwaukee, it would take us to Oaks Park, it would take us downtown. And in those days, at nine years old, you could ride downtown and enjoy the big shopping. But there was enough in Milwaukee that all our actual needs, we were there, but it was fun to ride the trolley. This is such a different thing. When the trolley went out, and they gave this as a park, this trolley trail is a park. It's a long, walking, biking path for people to go from Portland all the way to Oregon City. It's come to Gladstone already, but there's this section right there, between River Road and Park Avenue, that they're not putting in the trail yet, because they're tearing it all apart. And the intent is to cut down the trees. We also went up on the hill, where they've taken out five houses. And you look down now, you can see through the trees, you can see and hear the traffic, you're going to see all of that. When those trees come down, it's going to be horrible for the people that are left up there. You're going to cut back the bank, so you have room for all of these tracks. And the trail's going to get pushed up against the wall. They're going to have 15-foot concrete barriers along that hill, and then it's going to be all denuded of the trees. This is absolutely criminal. This is a park. And I don't know how you've managed to do this. We're mourning the death of the trees. And it looks like Charlotte is, too. All of you are going to look black. Yeah, Jamie needs to take off her jacket. But otherwise, you're all ready for the funeral. But I'd like to know, you know, the Oregon citizens believe that the district board did not protect this, as was your responsibility, to protect this trail. As far as I know, TriMet has not purchased the trolley trail, and I would like to know where you are in that. If you're purchasing, if they're purchasing it, or if it still belongs under your jurisdiction, and how you can allow this to be going on, and cutting down those big trees. They say they're going to build, they're going to plant new ones. Yeah, they've been grown two years. They're like, probably this high. Not as high as this, I would doubt, but at least, they're not going to be big trees in my lifetime or your lifetimes. This is something that's going to be denuded, all the noise, all the, the...
Okay.
Okay. One more thing. I invite the public to come. We'll be down there against tomorrow morning, 7:30 to 9:30. And you can join us also from 4:00 to 6:00, anywhere along the park where they'll let us. They've got all kinds of equipment in there now, but between Park and River Road on 9090.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
Me?
Yeah.
I'm Lanell Vandermolen from Tuallaton. I'm representing myself, but I have worked in the past for Ruth Bendel's Voter Integrity Project. Probably for the last three or four election cycles, I've also been a phone banker. And I have experience in not only anecdotal evidence that Oregon elections are open to election fraud, but hard evidence as well. And I want to ask a question of all of you. You can answer me with just a nod. When you came in from the parking lot this morning, you probably locked your cars, right? That's just common sense. Even though there was probably no one lurking in the parking lot to break into your cars, you just took whatever steps are necessary to safeguard your car. It's the same with our elections. We don't want to weaken our voter integrity by accepting the Secretary of State's permission, or was it an order, to save unused ballots after 8 o'clock on election night. This is building a weakness into our system, especially when we have elections that take several days to certify. Now, I don't know what her motivation was for telling various counties in the state that they no longer have to shred unused ballots after 8 o'clock, but I would like the assurance from Clackamas County that we go ahead and do it, no matter what the Secretary of State says. Because if you don't come down firmly on the side of voter integrity, you could always open up the impression that you're on the side of voter fraud. And so far, I don't know what's been going on, but I want the assurance that my vote is safe. Thank you.
And then, the next card I have is Cindy Lewis-Wolfram.
Cindy Lewis-Wolfram, Unincorporated Milwaukee. I'm here today not representing the CPO I work with, and not representing the work that I do on the Budget Committee for CRW. I'm here as a citizen who uses the water from Clackamas River Water. You've probably read in the paper the last week or so of the newest upset, to be polite, at CRW. And probably have hoped that they could get their problems worked out amongst the board at that entity. As someone who was at the last meeting of that, of this Clackamas River Water Board, I am here to tell you that that's not going to happen. This board is now at 2-2 on almost every issue. They tried to pass a measure to, a measure, a motion to send this situation about having to add another board member to you at their last meeting. Couldn't get anything but a 2-2 vote on it. So it doesn't seem like they're going to be able to ask you to come and help. As a citizen, I'm here to ask you, please, go do what you can do. Go either add another member to that board, or get rid of all four of the people that are there and install a new board. Something has to occur, and it has to be done out of this body, because they can no longer do it. I gave you the article from the Oregonian, the editorial, rather, I should say. There's other articles that can give you feedback from their viewpoint. I have been listening to feedback from my community for the last five years. And in the last two years, it's been getting worse and worse. People don't know what to do about the waste that's going on there. And the waste that's occurring is occurring because of primarily, one, Commissioner. That's the excess legal fees that are being incurred. Almost a million dollars. The Oregonian was very generous in citing $300,000. Almost a million dollars in excess legal fees being spent of our money because of one This entity needs you to take action. The citizens of the county are really tired of what's going on. Please act.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just want to, if I may, just, you know, I have requested some legal opinion and what the county commission can do, and actually, we're somewhat powerless by state statute. You know, if we're invited to help, I'm more than willing. I'm sure that, I talked to another commissioner who's also willing to be involved. If there is an impasse on a vote, you know, for, and we are asked to participate, we will gladly do that. So, I'm trying to do what I can without either violating any law or trust, but we're doing what we can.
Well, what I'm saying to you, sir, is that they're not going to ask you, as a board, because they're not going to get past that 2-2 vote. And that's why the citizens out there are going, "What the heck?" You are the body that is, that can do something about it, and-
I wish we could. And I think that's the difference. And until we have legal advice that says otherwise, we are not the legal body to intervene.
Well, I disagree with you, sir, so I would check your legal advice once again.
With that, we have, that's all the cards I have, and we will, the next item up is a public hearing on a board order accepting a transfer of jurisdiction from Clackamas County to the city of Lake Oswego for portions of Pilkington Road, McEwen Road, Kenny Street, and Bonita Road. And we have Bill Garrity here from the Clackamas County Engineering Department.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Bill Garrity. I represent the Department of Transportation and Development. It's 150 Beaver Creek Road here in Oregon City. What you have before you today is a board order accepting the transfer of jurisdiction for those four roads you just named. We have a state statute process that allows for public comments, and so that's what we're doing here today. We've got the resolution passed by the city council of Lake Oswego. It's been published four consecutive weeks in the Lake Oswego Review, and these kinds of transfers are consistent with the county policy of providing services at the best economic level for the citizens of the county. We have a lot of problems with the differing kinds of maintenance requirements on any kind of construction project, and these transfers are all relating to a pathway grant that the city of Lake Oswego had. McEwen and, on McEwen, and on Pilkington, Bonita Road, and Kenny Road each have a partition or a subdivision being granted for them. And so, the city wishes to use their standards rather than ours.
Any questions? Of staff about this? Perhaps from Lake Oswego.
I would actually like to ask, does the county incur any cost from transferring jurisdiction?
Not on this instance. We have some urban growth management agreements that require a cash payment based on a formula valuing the, a cost of an asphalt overlay. And Lake Oswego's and Clackamas County's urban growth management agreement have that in it, but the city did not request any funds.
Okay. So if we were to approve this, we would not be obligating the county to pay any funding associated?
Correct.
Great. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? With that, I will open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to speak about Pilkington Road, McEwen Road, Kenny Street, Bonita Road. Apparently not. So I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion on this item.
Chair Leehy and I move we approve the board order accepting a transfer of jurisdiction from Clackamas County to the city of Lake Oswego for portions of Pilkington Road, McEwen Road, Kenny Street, and Bonita Road.
And I second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Lininger and seconded by Commissioner Damon that we approve this board order for transferring jurisdiction to Lake Oswego of these four roads. Is there any discussion? I would just say, whenever we can move roads to someone else's jurisdiction, we should be happy to do it in most cases. So, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 4-0 and is unanimous. Yes.
Are we done with this agenda item?
Yes, we are.
So, we moved really quickly from the prior agenda item, but I wanted to make a comment related to the Clackamas River Water issue. I find it extremely troubling what's going on with that board, and the conduct and the legal fees that are being incurred, and the fact that, as I've read, they've lost their ability to have certain kinds of insurance because of the conduct being so extraordinary. Those are independent elected officials. Am I correct in that, Mr. Madcor?
Yes, you are.
So, so we have this challenging situation in which the people who are making these decisions are an independent legal body that is independently elected, separate from the Board of County Commissioners. They have the word Clackamas County in their name. They're individual- They're individual, Clackamas River Water, they don't have Clackamas County in their name, so Oregonian editorial notwithstanding, it's an independent legal body. That said, I do think that, for the good of all of the community, it sounds like it's unclear what kind of legal authority, if any, we have to step in when voters, you know, sometimes voters make decisions and then we have the product of their decisions. And so the voters have elected a set of Commissioners on Clackamas River Water who've been doing extraordinary things, and as democracy works, to a certain extent, you get what you vote for. And so we are in this odd situation where the thing that is in place seems to be deeply troubling. I would be interested, though, because I care very much about the well-being of the community and the careful use of resources, though I don't, though it's not clear that I have any kind of right to step in and try to help, I think we need to take a close look and figure out if we do have any opportunity to help improve the situation, and that's what I hear you asking, Ms. Lewis Wolfram. It's not clear that we do, but gosh darn it, we better look really carefully and figure out if there's anything we can do. Do we have any authority to appoint a replacement Commissioner? Do we have any authority to call for some kind of inquiry? Because we certainly want to help move the community in the right direction to the extent we can. So I would like to ask if Mr. Madcor can do, if our legal team, and if we have support on the board, for our legal team to do some research into what we, as a totally distinct legal entity who are not the elected officials in charge of that group, can do to try to help move this in a better direction, because it's really time for something to get better in that body. And I'd like to lend a hand if there's any legal way that I can be of service.
I really appreciate you stating that. I mean, I have, I guess, an attachment, a personal attachment, being in special districts for, you know, the last 10, 11 years, and so I'm very troubled by this, frankly. And I have inquired, as a matter of fact, one of our legal counsel, I even approached yesterday even, to look into just what you've asked for, to some, to, you know, just to get another concurrence from another other legal staff that have a lot of specialty and years of experience in representing special districts. So it is formed under state statute. It's a state jurisdiction or a subdivision of sorts of state law, the special district. So it's, you know, if we can in any way help this along, or, and I've been trying to communicate with some of the leadership there to assist in getting another appointment on that board, and I'm hoping that can happen very soon. So there's, I know there's efforts underway, and there's a lot of people that are very interested in trying to help solve this as best we can.
So do we have?
Do you have any other, is there anything you can offer, Steve?
We have a memo prepared on this that we've distributed to Administrator Wheeler, which I'm sure he'll distribute to the board.
I actually talked to Stephen Madcor about that early this morning, sensing this was coming up, wanting to know our boundaries of where we can and cannot assist. It is a sovereign board. It's not a subsidiary board of the Clackamas County. So as soon as I look at his memo, I'll get it out, and we'll see where we can go.
And I just want to assure everyone out there that we're just not sitting idly by doing nothing. We're trying to do what we can, and we'll still pursue whatever reasonable ways we can.
Yeah, no, I support that. I think at the very least, and I've actually been kind of surprised not to see this as an option come up, but, I mean, at the very least, we should really offer to them, you know, getting in contact with some mediators. It really absolutely seems like a situation that's right for a mediator to come in. Clackamas County has a mediation conflict resolution department, I know, so maybe there's an opportunity there to connect up folks. It seems like there are legal issues that need to be sorted out, relationship issues that need to be sorted out, board functionality issues that need to be put in place, you know, just a number of areas. So maybe, it sounds like it's a team approach that needs to occur to address these issues.
And then I would also note that, you know, when voters go to the polls, you make choices that matter. I mean, the decision that was made on 3401, that, you know, it sounds like some people intended for it only to extend to Portland, Milwaukee Light Rail, which they opposed, but, you know, the thing is broader. You know, when you vote yes on something or for someone, you get the whole package. You don't just get the one issue. You don't just get the very narrow thing that is your favorite part. And when you vote yes for a Commissioner, I think you have to look at a person's steadiness, responsibility, their belligerence, their, you know, the extent to which they may or may not have reasonable judgment demonstrated across time. And I think that perhaps some of these folks are up for election, and if they are, when they are, I think we all need to look carefully at the candidates we vote for and investigate what they stand for and their history of steady and reasonable teamwork, even in the face of controversy and conflict, and make decisions accordingly. And I think that opportunity is going to come up in a lot of contexts in November, and if Clackamas River Water is one of them, I am hopeful that people within that jurisdiction, I am not in that jurisdiction, will be looking carefully at next steps.
One thing I would add to this is that, you know, when you're elected, I think you have a fiduciary responsibility, and I think the very fundamental aspect of that is that you do what's in the best interest of the district, to your belief and your knowledge and your education. And I'm sure that, you know, sometimes, even though people disagree regardless of the issue, just put this matter aside for a moment, that I certainly respect when people have a different opinion of something, that they still have, I give everyone the benefit of the doubt, that people do have the best interests of their constituency at heart. And though sometimes that's questioned, you know, I don't necessarily, you know, just jump to the assumption that they do not have the best interest, even though they might be, either have some information or a personal opinion about that. It's hard to really speculate. And I'm speaking broadly, of course. I'm not, again, I'm putting this matter aside as I speak to this, but I think we've got to give people the benefit of the doubt that they are doing what they feel is in the best interest. But I think that they have to remember what that means and think about that as broadly as possible.
So we've kind of gotten far afield, so I want to thank Mr. Garrity for his presentation and, and, "On the road, on the road." He was here to present "on the road."
Controversial road it is. We went from roads to water.
Remember, the road issue had no controversy whatsoever. Happy to offload roads. And the only comment I will make on the Clackamas River Water, other than, yes, we would like to see this squared away as quickly as we can, is it does point out why most of these boards are odd-numbered, are supposed to be odd-numbered. And even number can be problematic over time, so we'll hope they at least get, can get, we can help them to get their fifth person there so that they might be able to move Next item up is the Consent Agenda, and I will ask the clerk or the administrator, whoever pleases, to read the Consent Agenda items by title only.
Yes, thank you. I'll be taking it this week. So the Consent Agenda begins with Health, Housing, and Human Services. Item number one, approval of a construction contract between Clackamas County Community Development Division and Silco Commercial Construction for the Wilsonville Senior Center Kitchen Improvement Project. Number two, approval of a subrecipient agreement between Clackamas County Community Development Division and Northwest Housing Alternatives to fund the Home Base Program in Clackamas County. Number three, approval for the January 2012, December 2016 Older Americans Act Plan on Aging for the Clackamas County Social Services Division Aging and Disability Services. Number four, approval of an Amendment Number Two to Professional Technical and Consultant Service Contract with Empowerment Initiatives, Inc., to Provide Residential Peer Support Services. Five, approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Oregon Health Sciences, Health Science University, Inter-Cultural Psychiatric Program for the Behavioral Health Outpatient Services. Number six, approval of Amendment Number One to a Revenue Agreement with Oregon Health Science University for the Cocoon Program. Under Elected Officials, number one, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under Technology Services, number one, approval of the ORMAP Intergovernmental Agreement Contract Number 2983 with the State of Oregon Department of Revenue. And that concludes the Consent Agenda. Thank you.
I would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the Consent Agenda.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Commissioner Savis and seconded by Commissioner Lininger that we approve the Consent Agenda. Anyone want to point anything out, discuss any of these items? No? Then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Passes 4-0 and is unanimous. Any other, any county administrator updates?
Actually, we covered what I was going to briefly mention, which was the Clackamas River Water situation and my request that the County Council look at what options we do have for intervention in that in a legal sense. I know we are all concerned about that. They're a different organization, but in Clackamas County, we all need to pull together, so we're going to try and find any way we can assist that's possible.
Can I ask, so Administrator Wheeler, I'm actually surprised that there wasn't any, weren't any questions in citizen communication today about next steps as a result of the passage of 3-401. And so I just wanted to share with folks that, you know, we are looking at all the ramifications and the implications. We don't know exactly what those are yet, and I welcome you anytime to step in, and we'll be forthcoming with next steps when we have those. But I just wanted to make sure that people knew that we're actively working on, you know, what this means and that actually there are quite a few unintended consequences, and we're trying to sort that out.
I think that's a very accurate commentary.
Okay.
Okay, and that brings us to Commissioner Communication. Anyone who would like to go first?
I'll go first. I just have a number of kind of fun things. First, I've discovered that we have the best espresso in Clackamas County in the West, including Canadian provinces. Our own Mountain Hood Roasters up in the villages of Mountain Hood took home that Best of category at the Seattle Coffee Roaster, I can't remember what it is, but it's a national, actually international, coffee roaster competition, and Mountain Hood Roasters won the Best of Blend Espresso for their Huckleberry Blend. So that's, I think that's quite a distinction with the cold weather coming up, so you should stop by there and check it out. A couple of the things I just wanted to share, there's, you know, fall is upon us, there are a number of fall activities, quite a few this weekend. We heard of some from Danielle Cowan about things that are coming up in October, but for this weekend, you know, I did spend some time up on the mountain last weekend, and I found out that this coming weekend is the last weekend for, that Ski Bowl is open for their summer activities. And so the weather is great if you want to get up there and check it out. We're actually having an event with the Warm Springs Tribe on Saturday where they are going to be arriving in full dress on horseback because of a dedication of a building up at Ski Bowl and renewed access to ancient huckleberry gathering grounds. And this is a big deal for the Warm Springs Tribe, and so that'll be happening on Saturday up at Ski Bowl. Also on Saturday, at the Philip Foster Farm in Eagle Creek, which is my historic site, the one I'm president of, it's our annual cider squeeze, and this is our biggest event of the year. So come on out and bring your apples and make some apple cider. It's really fun. So that's happening all day on Saturday. And then also on Saturday, there's a Bull Run Powerhouse Tour, and this is an old PGE facility on the Sandy River, just up from Roslyn Lake, and you go to Roslyn Lake Park and park there, and you can take a shuttle, and you can tour this facility. It's a historic structure. There are historic preservationists wrapping themselves around this facility to try to save it and restore it as an important part of Clackamas County heritage, and that's happening all afternoon on Saturday. So I'm sure maybe other people have other things to share, but there's a lot of great fall activities going on in the county, and I encourage you to get out and take advantage of it.
Well, we had a wonderful, the first of our town hall outreach meetings. We're doing a number of things in order to reach out to people in the community and hear more opinions, try to make it easier for more people to talk to us. One of those is moving our meetings to the night, one time a month in response to some requests from community members for whom it would be easier to come to us at night. Another is we're instituting quarterly town hall outreach meetings. And also, during the time that I've been on the board, we've approved bringing community planning organizations and hamlets and villages onto our Clackamas County Coordinating Committee meetings, so we're not just hearing from cities, but also representatives of a wide range of groups. So we're doing a lot of things, but our first town hall quarterly meeting was in the Welch's area yesterday night, and it was a great opportunity. There were probably about 40 people there, a wide range of questions. Elected officials from the city of Lake Oswego and Happy Valley also came because they have a role in transportation, studying and planning in some countywide groups, and so they wanted to hear from people up on the mountain about their perspectives, and it was a really positive thing. And the people in that community, I have to say, are so warm and gracious, and even though we don't agree on all issues, perhaps with each person, you know, the tenor of that conversation was really positive and makes me feel hopeful about how we can work together as a group, even though we're diverse, we have diverse opinions and diverse politics going into the future. So it was wonderful. Thank you to everyone on our staff and everyone in that community, the villages of Mount Hood and all of those community members, the Hoodland Women's Club, Pat Sharp, no, she's Village's board member, but all sorts of people represented, and it was a lot of fun, and thank you to everyone who made that possible.
Well, I want to thank Commissioner Liniger for the segue into that. I do want to actually thank, and it's a shame, Commissioner Bernard's here, I want to thank my fellow colleagues for supporting both the Commissioner Roundtable, the previous county commissioners who approved the, the bringing the CPOs to the C4 body and enhancing that public involvement, the first roundtable, the evening meetings. I really appreciate the support for that and increasing public involvement, so I think you, I'm grateful for that. I do also want to give personal thanks to Lake Oswego Counselor Donna Jordan, who appeared last night and spoke at the town hall, and Mayor Laurie Dreamer of Happy Valley, who came and spoke and took their time away, their personal time out to come and speak on the transportation needs in the county and being participants in our first town hall. It was great. I do want to remind folks out there that if you want to have a conversation and a dialogue, the first Wednesday of every month is our Commissioner Roundtable. It's in the building next door at DSB. It'll be October 3 at 5:30, and if you want to engage in a dialogue the first Wednesday or follow us for our quarterly town halls where we can also have a dialogue, and welcome you all there.
I was just going to mention that we held our fourth, and perhaps at this point, since we don't have another one scheduled, final forum with the Stafford-Borland neighborhood, and this one was on land trusts and conservation easements, and we had some experts from other arenas, from the Columbia Land Trust there to talk, and it was very informative, and I think the, we had good attendance and good participation, and I just want to follow along in a similar vein and say that the Stafford-Borland area, where there has been a decade of controversy, shall we say, and sort of divided camps on different ways to proceed into the future with Stafford and Borland, they have been coming together in really encouraging ways and being, even though they have differences of opinion, trying to find that common ground, and they've really, really made an effort. I think all sides involved in the Stafford-Borland issues have made supreme effort to find some consensus on how to move forward, so I want to compliment them in that regard.
May I say something? I'd actually like to compliment you in that regard because I know, so I've been on the board for almost four years now, and one of the things that happened during the first part of my time on the board was this process by which land would be designated as an urban or rural reserve for potential future development or not development, and it was very contentious what would happen with the Stafford area, which is bounded on all sides or on three sides by urban development. And I have supported reasonable development in that area, and I think people from different perspectives have really struggled with what to do in that area, and I think Chair Leehan actually, though perhaps you came to that issue with a less development-oriented -- development-oriented or—or mindset than—than I might have had coming to that issue, I think you have done a really tremendous job of trying to find a tolerable common ground for people with really different views about what should happen in Stafford in terms of next steps. And so we've gone from having a really polarized situation where the people who wanted to keep it undeveloped, you know, it seemed as if they wouldn't even talk to or be in the room with, people who wanted to develop it, who similarly felt really strong frustration toward those folks. And now we seem to be at a place, and I—I credit it very much to your leadership, where where the sides are coming together and feeling like, "All right, we—we need to find a path forward together." And this may not be what every single person had in mind. Someone might have wanted more density. Some people might want sooner. Some people might want never. And yet, they're coming together in forum after forum, in conversation after conversation, saying, "But you know what? We're all in this together. So let's figure out if there's something that we can do that we can all live with." And that is what's happening in that context. I think it's a real model for ways that people who don't always agree on stuff and who aren't each always going to get their way, which is unfortunately how the way—how the world works and how things are going to work in our community where we have a lot of different opinions on issues, how we can find a good path forward. And I think you've shown some great leadership on that, so congratulations. It's a story that remains to be told, but we're in an interesting and positive place.
And—and I should have said that there's not just at least three different factions, distinct factions in the Stafford-Borland neighborhood. There's—there are the three cities, Westland, Toowallaton, and Lake Oswego. And the three cities have not always been in agreement either on how to—to proceed and are probably still not in agreement on how to proceed. But—but even the three cities are now at a point of wanting to work together to find that—that path. And—and so I—I compliment the—the cities as well. But it's a—it's a—it's a delicate line to walk because you—you have such very different interests throughout that whole area. So with that, I don't have anything else on the agenda, so if there's nothing further, we are adjourned.